Welcome to the 2022 Outdoors Queensland Awards.
The Outdoors Queensland Awards recognise and reward excellence in the outdoors sector.
They celebrate individuals, organisations, programmes, events and activities that significantly improve outcomes for participants, clients and communities.
Outdoors Queensland is the peak body for the outdoors and outdoor activities. We are proud to deliver the Outdoors Queensland Awards and we are committed to the ongoing success of the outdoors sector in Queensland.
Welcome to the 2022 Outdoors Queensland Awards.
Good evening and welcome to the 2022 Outdoors Queensland Awards. My name is Mark Squares. I'm the Operations Manager at Outdoors Queensland and I am your emcee for this evening. Now, Outdoors Queensland respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners of the lands where we gather across the state. We pay respect to elders, past, present and emerging, and we acknowledge the important role that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples and traditions play in the outdoor community. And we welcome any First Nations people who are with us here this evening. It is the last Friday in October, so as our tradition would have it, we are here to present the finalists and announce the winners of this year's Outdoors of Queensland Awards. Now, we did consider a return to a live venue this year, but ongoing caution and concerns with the pandemic brought us back here online. With luck, next year though, will we be back live in 2023 with a show going out online as well, so that folks can still attend from across, excuse me, across the state. So we are pleased to welcome all our finalists who have joined us here on Zoom and everyone else who was watching on Facebook Live. So welcome, and we're grateful you have given up your Friday evenings to be with us here tonight. Now, to kick off the presentations, I'd like to ask Andrew Boyle, the President of the Outdoors Queensland Board, to officially welcome you all and to launch the 2022 Outdoors Queensland Awards. Andrew.
Thanks, Mark. On behalf of Outdoors Queensland, I am pleased to welcome all of you to the 2022 Outdoors Queensland Awards presentation. Queensland's outdoor sector continues to impress and sometimes surprise us with the innovative ways it helps people to connect through outdoor activities, particularly over the past 12 months, which have been incredibly difficult time for us. The quality of the nominees for the awards made the judging process a very difficult task, but also provided an opportunity to see to reflect on many of the wonderful achievements across our sector, which is what this evening is all about. I would like to acknowledge the contributions of my fellow board members, Michelle Thomas, Bec Fox, Fiona Coppin, Peter Gould, Ray Buchanan and Murray Stewart, for the time, energy and expertise that they bring to the board. I would like to make special mention to the staff of Outdoors Queensland, Dawn Imogen, Yvette, Mark and Dom, who deliver on the strategic direction provided by the board for our members and for Outdoors Queensland's sector or Queensland's outdoor sector. Delivery of events like these awards are a lot of hard work, but it's worth, but it's worth it to celebrate the efforts of so many across Queensland. Each of our nominees, finalists and winners are contributing to the goal of connecting people to Queensland's outdoors as part of a healthy life. Whether you know it or not, you're all helping Outdoors Queensland to achieve our mission and we thank you for it. Right from the commencement of these awards in 2002, both the Queensland Government and Brisbane City Council have sponsored these awards. I would again like to thank them for their support and continued relationships. I'd also like to thank Active Queenslanders Industry Alliance and KT Basecamp for their sponsorship of these awards. I'm looking forward to hearing from our guest speaker, Bo Miles, who will be joining us later this evening. And now I would like to hand over to a message from the Honourable Sterling Hinchcliffe, MP, Minister for Tourism, Innovation and Sport and Minister assisting the Premier on Olympics, Paralympic sport and engagement. Thank you. I hope you enjoy the evening.
Good evening. Firstly, I acknowledge the traditional owners of the many lands in which we meet, elders, past, present and emerging. Thank you to Outdoors Queensland for again hosting tonight's celebration of excellence in outdoor recreation. Congratulations to tonight's award nominees for your commitment to helping Queenslanders across the state stay active and involved in their communities. We know Active Queenslanders are healthy Queenslanders. The Palashay Government is committed to supporting Queensland's outdoor recreation industry through Accelerate 2022 to 2025. This is our second three-year action plan for sport and active recreation under the Activate Queensland Strategy. The outdoor recreation industry is important to the government's strategy of encouraging more Queenslanders to explore the state's great outdoors. When Queenslanders discover new outdoor recreation opportunities, they invest in the continuing recovery of our tourism and hospitality economy and their personal physical and mental wellbeing. The Queensland Government is sponsoring four categories of the Outdoor Queensland Awards. We're backing the Individual Achievement Award, Outdoor Recreation, Adventure Tourism and Outdoor Play Awards. It's terrific to see recreation providers enthusiastic about the legacy opportunities across the length and breadth of Queensland on our green and gold runway to the 2032 game.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Minister Hinchcliffe. Now, before we get on with the award presentations, I need to tell you how things are going to work tonight. Firstly, about a week ago, we sent out a box to all the finalists with strict instructions that it was not to be opened until we say so, and we haven't said so yet. So tonight, there'll be two sets of award presentations separated by our guest speaker, filmmaker and adventurer Bo Miles. For each award presentation, I will first announce the award and then we will run a short video featuring the finalists of that award, during which time the finalists of that award can open their boxes. Then we announce the winner, run a short video clip about the winner and then cross to the winner's Zoom feed so they can say a few words about winning, about their, their organisations, about what they do in the outdoors and they can show off their, off their trophies. So it is important that all finalists have their boxes at the ready and do not open them until the appropriate award finalist video is being played, so no peeking please. Now, please take photos or videos of yourselves or the winners holding their trophies or finalists holding their certificates so that you can share them with us afterwards. You can also share them on Facebook and Instagram using the hashtag Outdoors Queensland Awards. Now, while we are only able to present the finalists to you tonight, the Outdoors Queensland Board congratulates all nominees for their achievements and for their contributions to the outdoor community. So the first award to be announced tonight is the Queensland Government's Outdoor Recreation Award, which recognises an outdoor recreation peak body, club, provider, event or product that stands out from all others, that has raised awareness about the benefits of outdoor recreation and being outdoors, and has increased in participation in outdoor recreation and has made a significant impact on the outdoor recreation sector. Here are the finalists for this award.
The Queensland Government Outdoor Recreation Award. Established in 1972, the Australian Trail Horse Riders Association was formed for people who enjoyed horses, the outdoors and camaraderie in a non-competitive leisure horse environment. The association with affiliated clubs in each state is recognised by government at all levels, as well as the equine industry, as Australia's premier representative body for trail horse riders. Athra is a way of life for the whole family. It provides riding access to the most remote and beautiful places most people can only dream of. In 2022, Athra celebrated its 50th anniversary with a spectacular event in South East Queensland. An educational initiative, Tribal Link, is where tactile outdoor education, land, storytelling and dialogue between participants are used to complement prevailing classroom pedagogy. The Tribal Link Centre allows participants to experience the story, lifestyle, principles and struggles of the Aboriginal people from the Sunshine Coast, Ginnabarre, Gabby Gabby and Waka Waka. Central to the Tribal Link approach is the concept of true reconciliation with a mindset that the flourishing and generous lifestyle of the traditional custodians of the Sunshine Coast is a template for a new multicultural Australian society. Since 2011, Queensland Moto Park has been a recreational motorcycle facility providing safe, legal and engaging opportunities for participation in recreational off-road motorcycling, coaching, camping and events. The park provides a diverse selection of quality motocross tracks, 60-plus kilometres of bush trails and caters for riders of all ages and abilities, as well as being committed to rider safety. The Queensland Moto Park was developed and is managed by Motorcycling Queensland. Established in 2012, Outer Limits Adventure Fitness has evolved into a thriving outdoor company that offers school camp programmes and outdoor sports events. Outer Limits takes approximately 5,000 students on camp every year, ranging from day activities to multi-day journey-based camps. Their mission is to provide first-class trail running events to the North Queensland community. They endeavour to share their passion, skills and knowledge in adventure with the next generation.
And the winner of the Queensland Government Outdoor Recreation Award is Tribal Link.
Congratulations to Tribal Link, the winners of the Queensland Government Outdoor Recreation Award for 2022.
Tribal Link, congratulations. Who do we have there tonight?
Oh, g'day guys.
How are you doing? Who, who am I speaking to?
Oh, my name's Kerry. Everyone say nada, nada in Gabby Gabby language means hello.
Nada to you too, Kerry, congratulations. Is there anything you'd like to say to us tonight?
Ah, there is, and I better open this boxy first.
You go for it.
We've got our team here tonight and some of our partners here tonight, so give the boys and girls a big round of applause, please.
So whereabouts are you?
Um, we can't tell you, it's a secret.
Oh, okay. The secret location.
Oh yeah, it's our secret headquarters. No, no, just joking. We're in the Anwar, um, on the Sunshine Coast.
Yes.
And we're currently at the Village People. They've got a fantastic camp here and, uh, look at this car.
There it is, the, the trophy, well done.
Um, first of all, I really want to say thank you so much. I hope it's appropriate, but I really want to say thank you so much to God, you know, because I believe that he's helped us all this way. And also I want to say thank you so much to our team, without them, you know, and without, you know, awesome people that surround us, those old people that have helped us and brought us up, taught us different things so that we can share, you know, this, this love for the environment. And I know that everybody here tonight has this genuine love, you know, for the environment. And, and finally, our people are getting a chance to share that love in a different light, sustainable way of living, farming, all of those different kinds of things that are going to make not only this earth better, but our community's better, our people's better, and of course, our country, super, super awesome and equipped and ready for the future. We want to say thank you so much to all those involved, Queensland Government, all the people that have helped and sponsored this event and whoever made this awesome award here, we want to say, woo!
Nice one, Kerry, listen, well said. Nice sentiments to start off our award presentations tonight, so thank you very much. A great way to start, a great first and worthy winner. Okay, the second award to be presented this evening is the Brisbane City Council Outdoor Education Award. Now, this award is for school, early childhood, out-of-school care, camp or outdoor education providers that deliver outdoor education programmes in outdoor adventurous settings and significantly influence a participant's physical ability, mental health and ability to thrive. And here are the finalists for this award.
The Brisbane City Council Outdoor Education Award. Birdwings Forest School is an innovative and unique place for natural connection, a mobile outdoor programme in the Gold Coast hinterland, visiting local wild spaces, engaging in ecological work and making connections through arts and storytelling. Understanding that children crave the simplicity and openness of the time and space that nature provides, Birdwings Forest School offers early childhood forest kindy and adventure-based preschool programmes, family adventure groups, an adventure group for school-aged children and a school holiday forest school programme. Located on 20 acres of leafy natural bushland, the Sanford Valley Steiner School is an inclusive community of passionate people who are committed to learning, sustainability, mutual support and working together. The Steiner system of education provides opportunities to foster courage, imagination, resilience, understanding and to be effective contributors to society and the environment. The outdoor classroom camp programme nurtures a connection to the natural world, which is of profound importance to the healthy development of young people. Logan Lee State High School, set on 56 hectares of pristine riverfront land, is the second largest in Queensland. Since 2017, a two-year certificate to in outdoor recreation and a range of curriculum and extracurricular outdoor recreation and education-based programmes provide students instruction in core technical and activity skills. In addition, the school hosts a fully operational farm where students can study agriculture and conservation and a surf lifesaving excellence programme delivered in partnership with Kira Surf Lifesaving Club. Operating from two locations, Alexandra Headland and Muggera Dam, Sports Tuition has been combining education and exhilaration since 2001. Delivered by director Steve Wilks, a qualified physical education teacher and a team of experienced outdoor professionals, Sports Tuition aims to facilitate quality programmes designed to positively influence a student's social and personal development in a safe and supportive environment.
And I'd now like to ask Councillor Tracy Davis from the Brisbane City Council to announce the winners of this award. Councillor.
Well, thank you very much, Mark, and can I just start by congratulating some very worthy finalists? It was fantastic to see the video with all the work that you're doing and I'm sure everyone was as impressed as I was. The winners of the Brisbane City Council Outdoor Education Award are Birdwings Forest School and the Logan Lee State High School. Congratulations.
Congratulations to Birdwings Forest School and Logan Lee State High School, the joint winners of the Brisbane City Council Outdoor Education Award for 2022.
Now, as there are two winners of this award, we're going to hear first of all from the Birdwings Forest School. Good evening, ladies. Jennifer Nurell, nice to see you back again. Can you hear, I think you're still on mute perhaps?
Yeah, there we go.
Hey, excellent.
It's so great to be here amongst such amazing other finalists, doing amazing work with children. We're so happy, yeah.
Fantastic.
This is great. Thank you for recognising our work.
I was just wondering, is there anything special you can look back on over the last 12 months and say, hey, that really symbolises, symbolises or is a standout something of your last 12 months?
Other than the rain?
And severe weather events and being outdoors in this weather and
Still having a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the rains
And recovering from COVID and here we all are. And look, here's our team. We wouldn't be here without the team behind us, actually.
Excellent.
This is some of the team and we thank them so much for holding it all together.
Fabulous. Excellent. Well, thank you very much and congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, as you've heard, and as the quality of the nominations for this award was very high, the judges decided on the two winners. So now let's hear from the second winner, Logan Lee State High School. There we go. So is this Nathan?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, how are you doing? Congratulations, Nathan.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, excellent. Was this a bit of a surprise?
Um, yeah, a little bit. So we were actually having a bit of a joke today about what we would say if we won and I made the comment that if we did, it would have to be better than Kelly, who won the Young Achiever Award in 2020, because she's one of our past students. We've heard thanks, thanks to everyone staying with us, so.
Okay, Nathan, this is your chance to shine then. Go, go for it.
So, yeah, it's absolutely a privilege that we have been co-fidels with Birdwings. Congratulations as well. And yeah, like the programmes that we run out, like we really are back to the principles that we want students to be, um, those with characters of integrity, respect and resilience. And the work that we do really supports that and helps with their social, emotional, academic, emotional wellbeing. And it wouldn't be possible without the excellent support and backing I get from our school's leadership team and the outdoor teachers who work alongside me. And a big shout to say, um, thanks for me making special mention, Curtis and Taj, we won.
Excellent. Thank, thank you, Nathan. I must admit, I was looking at your, your video just before there, it looks like a fantastic spot you got down there. So well, well done and congratulations again. Okay, so before we announce the next award, which is also sponsored by the Brisbane City Council, we'd like to play you this short message about being active and healthy in your own backyard. So the, the next award is the Brisbane City Council Adventure Therapy Award, which is for an individual, organisational programme that has significantly improved the health and wellbeing of Queenslanders through the use of nature and/or adventure by delivering innovative programmes, interventions, training, advocacy and/or research. Congratulations to these finalists.
The Brisbane City Council Adventure Therapy Award. Jump Up for Kids, Brisbane's only outdoor adventure therapy allied health practice, is the creation of Madeline Avici. It combines her passion for getting children and families outdoors with 28 years of paediatric occupational therapy experience. Believing that a connection to nature is a necessity, not a luxury, Jump Up for Kids specialises in the use of natural spaces as a therapeutic tool to provide a healthy developmental foundation and a lifelong affinity with nature that will allow both the individual and the natural world to thrive. Succeed Healthcare Solutions offers occupational therapy, physiotherapy, exercise physiology and therapy assistance, along with speech therapy partnership for young people aged three to 35. Primarily delivered through clubs, the focus is on getting active, connecting with others and being in nature. The organisation has a strong commitment to outdoor therapy as an important therapeutic medium to improve the health and wellbeing of Queenslanders, turning a disconnected sedentary culture into a connected, active way of life. Mark Cartner brings a crime prevention and child protection perspective to bush adventure therapy, using outdoor activities to divert juveniles from antisocial or destructive behaviour. In 2014, with the support of a local school principal, the outdoor-based youth development programme Walk of Life was born. Now full-time as a school-based police officer at a local high school, Mark works to improve the lives of young people. In addition, he is the Deputy Chairperson of the Australian Association of Bush Adventure Therapy, working to promote the health benefits of being outdoors. Youth Flourish Outdoors is a health promotion organisation that offers early intervention programmes for young people, utilising complex trauma-focused outdoor adventure therapy. Engaging young people in outdoor adventure assists them to be free of the problem and enable them to understand what being well, powerful and content can feel like. Youth Flourish Outdoors runs training programmes in their evidence-based therapeutic model, which research has proven to be best practice for adventure-based youth work.
So Councillor Davis, would you like to announce the winner of this award, please?
Well, it'd be my great pleasure. Thank you, Mark, and another group of very worthy finalists. The winner of the Brisbane City Council Adventure Therapy Award is Succeed Healthcare Solutions. Congratulations.
Congratulations to Succeed Healthcare Solutions, winner of the Brisbane City Council Adventure Therapy Award for 2022.
Wow, thank you very much.
Our, our pleasure. Thank you very much for putting in such a great nomination and being such a great organisation.
Did we really earn this or did we like get in the judges' ear?
Yeah, that's
I've got a story to share about this.
Good, good.
So it got lost in the mail and it got delivered to an elderly lady around the corner from us on a different street, similar name. She thought it was a bomb because it had all the stuff on it saying, do not open until instructed. So it took her a while to get the courage to actually touch it and make the phone call to see whose it was. But yeah, I'd just like to thank the host, Outdoors Queensland, the sponsors and the judges of the Outdoors Queensland Awards. Having marked university assignments myself, I can imagine you might have needed your own outdoor adventure therapy breaks going through all these nominations. We'd also like to acknowledge the other finalists, including Jump Up for Kids, Mark Cartner and Youth Flourish Outdoors. I am blown away by the work that you guys do. You performed brilliantly in your own right and you're worthy finalists and we really respect your commitment to raising awareness for the benefits of being outdoors. We also want to thank our families, including my husband Paul, who said it you can't see, and our kids, Amber and Nathan, our amazing and diverse team, including Krista Sarno, who's our physio and allied health manager, who has shown true, true leadership and vision coming on this journey, as well Carolyn Fixgivon IT, who saw more in me than I saw in myself, our choir to help shape who we are, our business consultants, including Cathy Love and Nathan McDonald and accounting firm DLA Partners, and our awesome virtual administ team, Succeed Practice Management. So we hope that as a flexible, vibrant business that's committed to improving society's culture from being sedentary to active, we're able to inspire other therapists to see the benefit of offering therapy services outdoors. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Well said, Leon, lovely. Right, so we'll move on now to the, the fourth award. Actually, before we do this, I'd just like to say a big thank you to Councillor Tracy Davis for taking the time tonight to come here and, and help us out this evening. So thank you, councillor. Now, the fourth award this evening is the K2 Basecamp Emerging Achiever Award, which recognises the efforts and achievements of an individual new to the outdoor sector, a student, a young person or anyone making a change into the sector. Congratulations to the following finalists.
The K2 Basecamp Emerging Achiever Award. Currently midway through her Recreation and Outdoor Environmental Studies at the University of the Sunshine Coast, Annika Ekman is an emerging outdoor educator with a diverse array of experiences in roles aligned with outdoor education. Annika shows a willingness to extend and improve her practice through further study and professional development opportunities that have included youth work, training and facilitation roles and outdoor instruction at a number of outdoor centres in South East Queensland. Liliana Nemeth is not only one of the Sunshine Coast Recreation Precincts' emerging outdoor leaders, but also is a valued team player and passionate facilitator, delivering outdoor activities to a wide range of participants. She enriches the team's culture with high personal standards, a solid work ethic by being approachable, flexible to change and in her willingness to go the extra mile. Nothing is ever too much trouble in her dealings with staff, guests and clients. While studying at the University of the Sunshine Coast, Bella Moore has been working and volunteering in roles linked to outdoor education. Passionate about teaching for the environment, she has sought opportunities to extend her skills and knowledge. Bella is reflective in her practice, actively identifying gaps in her experience, seeking opportunities to be inclusive in her approach to learning and focusing on social equity, sustainable practices and the indigenous and cultural elements of environmental awareness. Alexis Newey developed a love for running when she participated in Park Run with her family at six years old and has since that time developed a commitment to running in all its forms. She regularly competes and volunteers at Park Run, trail running events and her local running group. She has a deeply ingrained love for the outdoors and not just satisfied with enjoying it herself, she consistently supports and encourages other young people to pursue healthy outdoor activities as well. Alexis is always thinking of others, treating everyone with respect and maturity. With a background in the fitness industry, Taylor Whitaker brings energy and enthusiasm to the Gold Coast Recreation Precinct and an eagerness to learn. She is currently completing a certificate for in outdoor recreation. a certificate four in outdoor recreation and has a great work ethic, shows initiative and always completes tasks assigned to her with practical efficiency. Always keen to support her team and the business, Taylor is willing to work extra nights and weekend shifts to provide quality customer experiences.
So with a line-up like that of worthy finalists, I'm very glad I wasn't the judge. The, the winner of the K2 Base Camp Emerging Achiever Award is Alexis Newey.
Congratulations to Alexis Newey, the winner of the K2 Base Camp Emerging Achiever Award for 2022.
Hi there Alexis, congratulations.
Hello. Thank you.
Fantastic. Now, is there anything you'd like to say? Anybody you'd like to, to, to thank or to acknowledge?
Yes, please. So, um, first, thank you Outdoors Queensland for this award. Um, and I'd also like to thank all the organisations that have supported me, Brisbane Trail Ultra, On The Edge Events, Springfield Runners Group and the Trail Running Association of Queensland. Um, I'd also like to, like to thank everyone that's here with me and of course my parents for everything they do.
Now, I know that your mum's been quite influential in your, your running career as well. You've done some running with her too, I believe?
Yes.
Excellent. Is she there tonight? She's with you?
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you Kylie for doing what you do for Alexis. Now, listen, Alexis, the other bit of good news for you is that K2 Base Camp, who sponsored this award, uh, have a voucher for you that you can spend at their store in, in Fortitude Valley. We'll be in contact with you somewhere in the next few days to sort out the details of that. All right. So there's a bit of, a bit of new kit. Excellent. Is that, is that Kylie in the background, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Alexis, Kylie and your family.
Thank you.
The, the, sorry, the Queensland Government Outdoor Play Award is for organisations like playgroups, nature play providers, community groups, councils, that have increased opportunities for Queensland children to spend time in unstructured outdoors, unstructured play outdoors and in nature. Uh, here are the finalists for this award.
The Queensland Government Outdoor Play Award. A leading provider of playwork support and training in Queensland, the outsiders' play advocates are well recognised across the childhood sector, leading to the outsiders being responsible for significant changes and outcomes for organisations regarding their physical space and practice. Using in-depth knowledge and best practice surrounding play theory, childhood development, psychology and playwork theory, the outsiders help people who work with children to establish the best possible outdoor spaces. Strong advocates for the importance of outdoor play, The Playmakers is a network of over 27 schools, kindies and outside school hour care operators who recognise that play is the most powerful education and developmental tool. They believe that children with an intrinsic connection with nature benefit in every aspect of their lives, flowing into a larger scale appreciation of the wider world and environment. The Playmakers educational settings reflect a commitment to purposeful, engaging learning experiences that foster academic and emotional development through the best practice use of resources. A family-owned, nature play-approved provider, Seedlings and Co Logan Reserve is committed to delivering the best in early learning experiences. Seedlings and Co offers natural environments, nutrition and social connections for children to realise their full potential. Their philosophy is rooted in Mother Nature and its rich opportunities to provide children with wellness. This is complemented by a vision to bring childhood back to children by getting them to be active, outside and exploring nature for extended periods of time. Cassawery Coast Family Daycare Scheme encourages and supports educators to use their outdoor areas in their homes and garden. Family daycare is supervised home-based childcare in a family setting for children between the ages of zero and 12. This programme is funded by the Commonwealth Department of Family and Community Services and regulated by the Office of Early Childhood Education and Care. The Cassawery Coast Family Daycare Scheme sponsored many early educators in the area to participate in a nature play training day. Camp Hill Outside School Hours Care foster learning through a stimulating loose parts environment that encourages freely chosen, intrinsically motivated and personally directed play. Its 35 staff utilise a playwork way of being with children in their large loose parts adventure playground. Their aim is to enrich children's lives by introducing them to life skills, knowledge and experiences that go beyond their school learning.
And the winner of the Queensland Government Outdoor Play Award is The Playmakers.
Congratulations to The Playmakers, winners of the Queensland Government Outdoor Play Award for 2022.
Vicky.
Hello Martha, very, very exciting. I'm here by myself, I'm afraid, but I'm representing all of those schools.
Not, not a problem. It's nice to see you here and congratulations.
Thank you so much. I would like to say that I'm here today on Yugara and Turaball land, which is really important to us in The Playmakers, the indigenous perspective of play. They've been playing on this land for many thousands of years before our current students that we work with have been doing that. And we do also support Dr Miriam Rose Ungarbaum's focus on didi, the indigenous art of mindfulness, and it's very common practice through all of our playmakers. But thank you so much, everyone. Thank you to all the other finalists, one of which was actually one of our playmakers as well. And whilst there's 27 current schools and kindies and oshas, there's another 16 of those that have come through in the last seven years and are learning and growing with play and bringing back childhood. So thank you so much. This is very exciting.
I, I'm glad that you, you're pleased with the, with the win. Nice one Kylie.
Thank you.
Sorry, Vicky, pardon me. Nice one, Vicky. Alrighty. Well, we'll roll on to the next award then. My apologies there for the, the misname. So the next award in this segment is the AQIAA Workplace Development Award, which is sponsored by the Act of Queenslanders Industry Alliance, and is for organisations that support workforce development by taking on trainee employees or volunteers, providing in-house training or supporting workers to undertake external training. So congratulations to the finalists.
The AQIAA Workforce Development Award.
Paramount Adventures is a registered training organisation that operates in Burley Heads, delivering training in multiple locations in Queensland. Committed to quality training and service delivery, director Dave Payne has a passion for helping young people achieve their potential through vocational training, traineeships and staff development. Paramount Adventures provides a range of employment options due to their diverse offerings in outdoor recreation activities. Perfect Beginnings Childcare is a registered nature play early learning service provider located in Eight Mile Plains. Planning the development of a future workforce, a high priority is put on the training and upskilling of team members. In-house learning modules have been created that include personal responsibility, supervision, communication, collaboration, legal requirements, teamwork and leadership, in addition to traineeship opportunities and quality service expectations.
So I'd like now to introduce Jo Chu, the Industry Development Manager of the Act of Queensland Industry Alliance, to announce this award winner. Jo.
Thank you, Mark. Um, we're very proud to be here tonight to present this award. Um, and the winner of the active workplace, sorry, AQIAA Workplace Development Award is Paramount Adventures.
Congratulations to Paramount Adventures, winners of the AQIAA Workforce Development Award for 2022.
Dave Payne, how are you doing? No, I think you're on mute, mute there Dave.
Have you got me now?
Yes, beautiful. Thank you. Congratulations mate.
Thanks very much, mate. It's a real honour to win the award. Um, we've been putting a lot of work into, uh, developing pathways for a crew that want to get into the industry. And through the RTO, it's been great to have a, a number of traineeships underway. And um, it's, it's just a great direction, I think, that we can encourage young people and, and mature-aged people to get into the industry.
Excellent, excellent. And are there anything you could look back on over the last few months and say, okay, that was a particular highlight?
Uh, it's just good to, um, do the combination. I've got adult trainees and I've got some school-based trainees as well. And, um, they're all, uh, moving into the industry and, and pursuing it as a career. And it's just, uh, great to see that mix of, uh, different ages and different types of people getting involved in the industry. So it's, it's just really encouraging to see. Great to get that support and the encouragement to continue on and, and keep developing this fantastic industry.
Excellent, excellent. Well, you're, you're well-known on the coast down there Dave, so congratulations and, uh, keep, keep it up, I guess.
All right. Thanks, mate. And again, thanks to Outdoor Queensland, um, for just putting this all together. And it's a great job and we appreciate all the effort and input you guys are putting into, um, the whole process as well. So thanks again.
Our, our pleasure Dave. Thank you very much. So the, the next award is the Queensland Government Adventure Tourism Award. This award is for a tourism operator, event or product that delivers outdoor activity products or adventures for either local or inbound participants. Congratulations to the finalists for this award.
The Queensland Government Adventure Tourism Award. Cape York Motorcycle Adventures is a small family business operating fully guided off-road tours between Cairns and Cape York. Since 1990, they've been the ultimate motorcyclist's bucket list adventure. Tours are designed to test the rider's skill level. The customers ride and they take care of the rest. Eco-certified since 2006 and following the best practice guidelines from Eco-Tourism Australia, Cape York Motorcycle Adventures have planted over 33,000 trees at their headquarters since 2008. Two Bent Rods was created in 2004 when founder Samantha Beckman, on holiday with her family, was surprised that many kids who lived close to the water didn't know very much about marine life and fishing. Two Bent Rods delivers fishing classes and affordable, positive, family-focused experiences for children and their families, as well as school groups and seniors. Two Bent Rods works with kids of all ages, showing them how to connect with nature and the environment, with many developing a passion for the outdoors and forging lifelong memories.
And the winner of the Queensland Government Adventure Tourism Award is the Cape York Motorcycle Tours.
Congratulations to Cape York Motorcycle Adventures, winners of the Queensland Government Adventure Tourism Award for 2022.
Renee, congratulations.
It's fine. It's very pretty.
Very good. It's a bit hard to hear you Renee. You're, can you get a bit closer to the microphone perhaps?
Um, is that better?
That's much better. Yes, thank you. Yes. So, so well done. Congratulations. Is there, is there anything you'd like to, to say?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, firstly, I'd like to thank the Queensland Government for sponsoring this award. Um, Motorcycle operates in global significant environment and cultural naturally. We love to share all of our writing. I'm proud to represent Cape York Motorcycles Tour. We've been making constant efforts, continually improving and setting bench art high industry in 1991. So another one. Thank you to Outdoors Queensland.
Not a problem. I did notice on your website, I think it was, that you've won a few, few awards in the past. So well done for this, uh, the next one on the list.
Yeah, I, I've wanted this one for a little while. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, I, I'm pleased we could do it for you tonight. So well done again, Renee. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Somebody having a good time there up in Cape York. So the, the next award is the Outdoors Queensland Government Achievement Award. Nominees for this award include local or state government departments, persons or programmes and/or agencies that have produced positive outcomes for the outdoor sector. And here are the finalists for this award.
The Outdoors Queensland Government Achievement Award. The Queensland Recreation Centres on both the Gold and Sunshine Coasts are operated by the DTIS, the Department of Tourism, Innovation and Sport, through sport and recreation. The centres offer quality accommodation, meeting spaces, recreation facilities, instructor-led activities and delicious healthy catering for individuals, groups, casual users and regular hirers, delivering quality recreation experiences that enable Queenslanders to participate in physical activity in a safe and inclusive environment. Delivered by the Scenic Rim Regional Council, the Empower Her Hiking Programme aims to empower women and girls to explore the spectacular scenic rim whilst building confidence and fitness through hiking by reducing barriers to participation, including affordability, time flexibility, transport and self-motivation. With over 400 individuals participating, the programme has provided significant opportunities for women and girls in outdoor recreation and by attracting new clients and visitors to the region, also has supported outdoor recreation operators and the wider community. The Oxley Creek Transformation Project, delivered by Brisbane Sustainability Agency for the Brisbane City Council, will over 20 years transform the Oxley Creek Corridor from the Brisbane River at Tennyson to Warral Parkland, Larapinta, into a world-class green lifestyle and leisure destination. The first deliverable in the Archerfield Wetlands Parkland, one of Brisbane's largest floodplain ecosystems, is a three kilometre long walking trail and wetlands lookout known as the Discovery Trail.
And now I'd like to invite Andrew Boyle, the President of the Outdoors Queensland Board, back on screen to announce the winner. Andrew.
Thanks, Mark. And the winner of the Outdoors Queensland Government Achievement Award is the Empower Her Hiking Programme, Scenic Rim Regional Council.
Congratulations to the Scenic Rim Regional Council's Empower Her Hiking Programme, the winner of the Outdoors Queensland Government Achievement Award for 2022.
Indeed. Congratulations.
Well done. I'm on my own as well, but definitely representing an amazing team in the background at council. Very proud of this project. Um, can I thank a few people too, Mark?
You absolutely can. Please go right ahead.
Thank you. Of course, I, I want to, um, council's honoured to be receiving the Queensland Government Achievement Award, the Outdoors Queensland Government Achievement Award. Empower Her's been an amazing programme, offering more than 900 outdoor rec opportunities for women and girls. Um, and equally, we share this award with our programme partners. That's Park Tours, O'Reilly's Rainforest Retreat and Mount Barney Lodge, who delivered the programme to the highest of standards and created fantastic experiences for each of the participants. Uh, thank you to the Queensland Government and Health and Wellbeing Queensland in supporting this project through active kit funding. Um, thanks to the hard work of our project team over the past 18 months, designing, planning and implementing Empower Her. Uh, the response and the outcomes of the programme exceeded all of our expectations and we certainly hope to continue the legacy of Empower Her in encouraging more people to experience the outdoors. I just want to thank Outdoors Queensland for these awards. It's a great job you're doing and highlighting the great work that's being achieved in the sector. And of course, um, congrats to all the other finalists. Such an amazing array of outdoor recreation opportunities. Thank you.
Our, our pleasure. I must say that A, if I was female and B, I was in the Scenic Rim area, I would, I would come on the programme. What I've seen of it, it looks fantastic.
Yeah, we're very proud, very proud. Thank you.
And so you should be. So, so thank you very much. Excellent. All right. So now we are moving on to the next award. Which is the final award for tonight. So nominees for the Queensland Government Individual Achievement Award have demonstrated professionalism, high achievement in a particular field and exemplary role, role modelling. So congratulations to all the finalists for this award.
The Queensland Government Individual Achievement Award. Chris Schamansky is High Par Wild's coordinator and driving force, overseeing an average of 140 delivery hours per week to eight to 12 participants. He is a high achiever in his field of adventure therapy, holding a Bachelor of Psychology, Training in Complex
training in complex trauma adventure therapy principles and all relevant outdoor qualifications for Hypar Wild activities. Chris consistently demonstrates exemplary leadership and role modelling by integrating the Hypar group values into their programmes, which include building relationships, valuing people, encouragement, leadership and reflection. Spending most of his career working in both outdoor recreation and outdoor education in South East Queensland, Simon Roberts has been a wilderness guide, an outdoor instructor and since 2006, an outdoor education teacher. Today, he coordinates the outdoor education programme at Sanford Valley Steiner School, having previously worked for 13 years at Hillbrook Anglican School. Building a rapport with students and staff, Simon is dedicated to helping the individual overcome fears, use self-discipline to build resilience and connect with the outdoors. Graham Pringle, the programme and training director of Youth Flourish Outdoors, is well-known in the outdoor recreation and leadership circles, not only in Queensland but also nationally and internationally throughout the adventure therapy and adventure-based learning communities. Graham's course in trauma-informed adventure therapy is a nationally-known foundational course for anyone seeking to work with young people with complex behaviours. He has held many leadership positions in the sector and works tirelessly to promote ethical outdoor practices and human rights advocacy in outdoor organisations. Based at QCCC Mappleton, Andrew Grant has guided the organisation since 2009. His selfless leadership and tireless campaigning throughout the COVID-19 pandemic served not only QCCC but the whole outdoor education industry. His interpretation and dissemination of information and guidelines issued throughout the pandemic provided clear guidance for many in Queensland in the sector. His experience interacting with and lobbying bureaucrats for beneficial outcomes ensured the sector was well-placed to respond appropriately. Craig Humbly has been an active, passionate and dedicated outdoor educator for almost 40 years. His ongoing commitment to devising and implementing safe educational programmes has helped many teachers, instructors and coaches develop their professional expertise. Believing that success only comes from whole-of-team involvement, Craig models an active and practical style of learning and lifestyle that inspires others to do their best to work for the good of the team.
So again, some fantastic finalists for this award. Again, some challenges, I'm sure, in the judging team making their minds up as to who is the most appropriate or the best winner for this award. And the winner of this award is, for the Queensland Government Individual Achievement Award, is Graham Pringle.
Congratulations to Graham Pringle, the winner of the Queensland Government Individual Achievement Award for 2022.
Congratulations, Graham. Well done.
Thank you.
So would you like to say a few words to the crowd?
Yes, well, I have a small crowd here behind me, which I might show you later if I can figure the technology out.
Go for it.
Look, first of all, thanks to the Queensland Government for sponsoring the award and congratulations to the other finalists, most of whom I know. Oh, yeah, there's one of them. Some of the team in the background. Also, I'd like to thank my wife, Janelle, for putting up with a long, long period of low income while we did all the work that we've been doing. And of course, to my wife, Oteem, many of whom are with me here tonight, who put in lots of hard work to do things, because none of these individual awards are ever about the individual. It's always about the team that supports them. And also, I'd like to sort of send a message out there to the young people and their families with whom we work, because without them, we wouldn't be having any fun at all. And I'd like to also call on practitioners and organisations in our work to pursue a humane practice in the work that they do, because there are some in my research that I've found, there are places in the world and in Queensland as well, where young people are not treated humanely in their programmes. And our work is the opposite of doing harm to people. So humanity in our programmes is, I think, the key to our success. To that point, I'd like to invite people to have a look at our website. You can see on there, we've written a white paper. We're so serious about human rights in the work that we do outdoors, that we've got a white paper in there and we'd encourage practitioners and organisations to have a look and think about the people that they serve, the Human Rights declarations and conventions that apply to those people and make their own promise on their websites about adhering to human rights in the work that they do. And if you want to see what we're doing there, just go to our website, you'll find that white paper. So thanks very much. Here's the award. And if I can figure out how to turn it around, no, I won't. I'll just show you. Here's the rest of the team.
Hey, well done, team. Thank you for supporting Graham. So Graham, I was talking to, we're all gone. Pardon me, sorry about that. So time for a bit of a change of pace. So we were initially planning to bring you our guest speaker earlier in the evening, but unfortunately we had some technical difficulties and that wasn't possible, so we have rolled through. But now we have a change and here's a short video to introduce our guest speaker.
G'day, my name's Beau Miles. I'm 37, about to turn 38. I am an outdoor educator and I live on a small farm, little five acres, about 100 kilometres east of Melbourne. Beautiful little spot. This footage you're about to see, this is what I've been up to for the last 15-odd years. I paddled a sea kayak around South Africa and Mozambique for five months. Hell of a formative experience. I did that about 10 years ago and it has shaped me as an adult. I think I was a boy when I started and a man when I popped out the other side. I then ran across the Australian Alps, ran from Canberra to just out of Melbourne, first bloke to do it. It was really, it was tough. I'd never run, you know, 14 marathons in a row over the mountains. So, yeah, that was a big old test, you know? Psychologically too, because my body didn't break down enough, so it was that thing, do you keep going or do you pull up? And I kept going. I'm quite proud of that. I recently paddled across Bass Strait from the Australian mainland down to Tassie. I did that part of my PhD as well, so I'm a new doctor of adventure, if you can believe it. And so I'm on the other side of that just now. So I'm up in the mountains, that's where I am, trying to lose the gut after being on the PhD wagon. So I'm doing some guiding up here for some people over the next few days. So I'm in this lovely time of my life after PhD, after the expedition, where I'm sort of getting back to a regular rhythm. I'm a good problem solver and I really like simple living. And that's what expeditionary life does. It really strips back all our complex lives and our screened lives with emails and phones and constantly on computers and whatnot. And so I really look forward to that break. Very opposite to a PhD.
So Beau Miles, self-described as a filmmaker, polyjobist, speaker, writer and odd, is our guest speaker this evening. Some of you may know him as the man who walked 90 kilometres to work, others from his new book, The Backyard Adventurer. We are delighted that he can be with us here this evening. And if you have any questions for Beau following his presentation, put them in the chat and we'll endeavour to get them to him at the end of his presentation. So please welcome Mr. Beau Miles, or Dr. Beau Miles, perhaps I should say. Welcome, Beau.
Thumbs up from folks. I don't know, you kind of fly a bit blind on these things. I'm sitting up in my little cabin, in fact, it's my wife's cabin, I just built it, but this is where she works. And it's been storming all day and I've been noticing, I've been a bit of a voyeur, looking at all of your photos, wherever you are in your workplaces or having barbecues or outside, and you're all in one layer of clothing. And here I am in, I've got a puffer, I've got a vest and then I've got a Gore-Tex. I don't have them layering right, because I've just been dressing incrementally throughout the day. And then several layers under that, I've got five layers on and it's snowing in the hill behind me at the moment. So you bastards Queenslanders, I'm down here in Victoria freezing my tail off in a little shed on top of a hill. So it's nice to be sort of surrounded by your warmth. What I'm going to have a yarn to you about, and look, before I do get into this, and it's not a big PowerPoint presentation, or I've only got 10 or 12 slides to show you folks, but what you're about to see is sort of my transition from the outdoor life to in many respects, the indoor life. But then how I make that work, because by nature and by instinct, I'm very much an outdoor person. But what that bio was, I sent through that video to the crew earlier today, that was actually my Survivor audition tape about five or six years ago. And I was in the final cut before it went to air. So I was the final sort of 20 or 30 people in 2018 out of 20,000 people that applied. And I think they missed out on a great opportunity to have a good, fun Australian bloke on the show, but there you go, I failed miserably. But that was my audition tape for that and I thought, oh, it's a nice little fun thing to send up as an audition. Yeah, I look forward to your questions if you've got some. I'm going to bang on for about 15 or 20 minutes about my outdoor life and about my transition from being a guide for 20 years to my world now as a YouTuber and as a dad and as a writer. So by all means, send your questions through and if I don't see them, Mark will by all means reiterate things. So what you've got here is, I mean, they're my two worlds in some respects, the play button and when I can get outside. These two chosen professions in some respects are quite at the opposite ends of the spectrum and yet they're really linked. And in fact, I have to make them linked. But what is really fascinating about my life now as an outdoor person, and this will speak to a lot of you folks, is that a lot of people think that there's a hierarchy of experiences, that for example, going for a run where you film it and that you don't have that lovely flow state of going for a run is less of an experience than if you don't film it and you go out there for this pure, unadulterated 20 or 30 minutes or two hours, whatever it is you go for. So I'm going to touch on a little bit of that. It also talks about the hierarchy of feelings and how we use our senses and how I have come full circle now and as a 40-some-year-old bloke, I'm very much into more bang for buck, less time travelling to get to exotic locations and I'm all about backyard adventuring. I mean, here's an example of the hierarchy of experiences. When you see this picture of myself and my daughter down at the coast, we're not in Queensland, clearly, she's wearing a jumper in the water. So our water there is about 10 degrees. This is a lovely scene of just me and my daughter having an experience. And in fact, she's a COVID kid, so this was her first time at the beach, almost two years old. That's a lovely, pure experience of my daughter and me. Clearly someone's taking a photo, that's my wife. And in fact, I did make a film that week we were at the beach. So you have this play button now attached to this memory. People then very much jump on the idea that then I have adulterated this experience to be something pure and lovely and very family-oriented to something that's screenified and is no longer as good as the real thing. I happen to believe that. I think that's true. I think I would much rather be there with my daughter than making a film about being there with my daughter. But that doesn't mean something like a film can't get you some incredibly rewarding feedback loops with life, which is what I'm pursuing now via YouTube. One of the funny things I always found about the outdoor sector is that the better at it you get, the less of it you do. I found myself as the head of outdoor education at Australia's largest university, working my tail off as a guide for many years and doing my masters and PhD and going through the grind and loving it actually, but I found myself in this power of leadership or this position of leadership and I was no longer able to guide anymore because it was not seen as worthwhile as writing a paper or an article about guiding. And I thought, isn't that a huge conundrum? And in fact, I'm kind of living that now as I've gone away from the university sector. I'm in a screen just as much or in front of a screen just as much. So this is my big midlife crisis, how much screen time I have compared to reality, but what are the compromises within that? I saw this Telstra, lovely Telstra, I love Telstra. I'm beaming to you at the moment from my cabin on top of the hill via Telstra, via a little hotspot. But when I saw this in my local town, I was really put out by the fact that a camping scene with kids in their sleeping bags watching a screen is an advertising tool for our big telecommunications company. I thought, this is crap, I don't want to live in that world. And then I thought, hang on, Beau, you're a YouTuber. They could be watching you on that screen right now. What's going on, you know? What is my relationship with this scene that I was repulsed by? But the fact that, you know what, I'm playing to this very thing and that great reception around Australia and people's availability for my films on their phones makes me my income. This was quite a, you know, this was quite a shock to me, the fact that I was repulsed by the photo, but then when I thought about it, I thought, I can't be and I'm very much feeding into that. The great conundrum of, and that's what I called this presentation to you folks, is, you know, I call myself now this backyard adventurer and I say things like, you know, you should go and do things rather than watch them on a screen. And yet here I am feeding into that very thing, to the point where backyard adventuring is so important to me now because I've had, I've been lucky enough to have 20 years of non-backyard adventuring. So when a lot of folks say, hey, Beau, have you found the new way, the new form of outdoor education, the new form of outdoor life, where you only go 20 kilometres from where you grew up and that's it, and you can get your life's worth of experiences in that radius? I have to say, you know what? No, that's kind of not what I'm advocating. I think that's part of the puzzle. But I had this amazing counterpoint before becoming this backyard adventurer, living overseas for 20 years, constantly travelling and constantly being as far away from my backyard as possible before I realised just how amazing it was. And now I want all this bang for buck in my closed circuit. Some of you may have seen the sort of, my latest film on YouTube called Bad River, or it was a couple of months ago now actually, where I went down the Cooks River in Sydney. The shocking part about this river is, or rather the huge insight into the Bad River series, there's three more to come out, is that they're all in Australia and they are all in some respects rivers that I never would have paddled 20 years ago. Why paddle the sickest, unhealthiest, most polluted rivers in Australia? They're not nice experiences. They're very confronting, they're unhealthy, I could potentially become unhealthy, they are illegal, three out of the four trips were bordering on illegal and I'd have to be sort of dodging the authorities the whole time. But the insight from these localised, not pretty, unhealthy environments was incredibly profound, very much like the most pure, the highest, the longest, you know, so as an opposite of what classic adventure might be or what a lot of classic leisure is, very pleasurable, they've certainly shaped my life. It's kind of as if I'm having experiences again as a 10-year-old, where I'm having really formative experiences again, I'm having them as a 40-year-old and it's incredibly empowering. I thought I'd jump around just momentarily. Rather than talk about, I suppose, just my film life and how that is reshaping the way I think of outdoor life, it's my interpretation of the world when I am there. And so Angus MacMillan, I don't suppose many Queenslanders would know much about him, is essentially a likehart-type character to your Queensland, you know, early explorer, pastoralist, colonial fellow that went out and was part of the whole sort of empire-building party. I was in MacMillan House when I was a kid, you know, I was a yellow kid. I'd go around in a yellow t-shirt that was called MacMillan and I thought he was a hero and I'm, you know, I'm not overly, I'm 42 years old, so this happened 30-odd years ago. I was a MacMillan representative, 120 years after the bloke lived. It turns out that MacMillan, like a lot of those early pastoralists, was, he was a violent man and was part of huge atrocities to the First Nations folks. And that's all coming to light now and yet, of course, there's still lots of things called MacMillan. When I found out that MacMillan had a walking track named after him and it hadn't been run, I thought, right, here's a really good idea, it's a backyard adventure, it's in my backyard. I now live, I'm now sitting in a small cabin on West Gippsland country, Kernai country, that MacMillan helped open up. I'm very much living the rewards of his early life, of his life in Australia. So I thought, right, I'm going to go and run this track and I'm going to try and figure out a better form of history for me to tell my daughters. I've got a six-month-old daughter and a three-year-old daughter and I don't want them to be in MacMillan House. I don't want those sort of untruths to be taught to them. So I recently ran across the track and have made a film series about it and lo and behold, it's the hardest thing I've ever had to make as a story. Because, you know, I'm just a lucky educated white bloke telling this story of how I live in five acres of Eden and I want to find out a bit more about my history. and I want to find out a bit more about my history. It has to go a bit deeper than that and now I have to figure out some ramifications of where I'm at in life. That's not being guilty, that's not being sad, it's just being more informed. Uh, but how does that look in story form? And it's been the hardest film I've had to ever make. Hardest to the fact that it comes in multiple ways. Um, I got my ass completely kicked by the trail the first time I did it, it was too hot, I baked my kidneys and I had to be uh not evac'd out of there, but I certainly had to get my cotton socks uh out of the mountains and home to somewhere where I can drink electrolytes. Fifteen weeks later, I went back and I I was able to run the track. Uh, it was incredibly, you know, a little bit like the Bad River experience, very quite confronting in that I'm running this track that has such laden history to it. Uh, and I'm only just discovering it now as this forty two year old bloke who's had all this education and has missed all this vital local information in my outdoor life. Staggering beauty, uh, I was blown away by it at times. Um, to the point where I often got distracted with why I was there, which was a very good thing, great distraction to have such an empire of nature and landscape around me. Uh, but the first this first trip in particular, when I was so, and I was suffering so much, I didn't give McMillan a second thought, Angus McMillan. I certainly did on this second one when my body was able to allow that and I wasn't just selfish about the intentions of the trip. And of course, like all good trips, you end up at the pub uh at the end of it to reflect on what just took place in a real whirlwind, they opened up the pubs for me and I had this this great final experience um out there in the mountains before reflecting on it. I suppose that's kind of where I'm at now in a sense of of my storytelling. There has to be, it has to be more just about than about Bo's inner monologue. Uh, they're not just vlogs, they have to be slightly historical, they have to be, they have to agitate something, they have to be fun. And the outdoors has to be fun, otherwise our next generation, wow, they want to go out there when there's fun to be had on a computer screen. So I really love the the very simplistic idea of just make it fun. Provocations too, you know, sixteen year olds love having a provocation in the outdoors, as in a really good, deep and meaningful chat about why we're there, what we're doing there, who was here before us, uh, all the historical layers. Make that accessible and uh, you know, you have a ball yourself, let alone the people you're with. So I think that's a really important part now, if I was to ever return to guiding, I would very much make that front and centre. This is the project I'm working on today. In fact, when I um chatted to Mark and the team today for a trial of the technology of of this very chat I'm having with you now, I was in amidst making the screenplay for this Bad River, the second um, the second episode. This is where I descend uh the most polluted, stickest river in Australia. It happens to be in Tasmania amongst some of the most incredible wilderness you can imagine. The banks of the river itself are vibrant to the point where you would think that the Tassie Tiger still exists. But the river itself is dead, completely and utterly dead. Uh, no, it cannot support life whatsoever. The contrast in these experiences, uh, as I sort of mentioned before, is incredibly powerful. I wonder if your sector up there in Queensland, and I'm sure it does, you you're progressive in the outdoors, has some of these provocative experiences out there that shake people's status quo? In a sense, you know, what what they think is a great outdoor experience and why, based on it, on what ingredients? I'm trying, I'm tending to look for adventures now that 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 have these volatilities to them simply because it makes me think more and and I suppose question humanity and my place in it. What I've aimed to do, folks, I think I've done okay, is talk for rattle on for about twenty minutes so that we can have five minutes of of chat. I know that there's twenty or thirty or fifty of you out there in in cyber land or a hundred of you, I'd love to chat to you and and answer your questions. So before I uh give you uh my Boisms on Insta or go to YouTube and subscribe to me and and earn me lots of money by watching my films or buying my awesome seven out of ten book, I thought, um, uh, yeah, I'd love to chat to you. So are there any questions right off the bat? Mark might have some that have fed through the the chat room or something, but otherwise, shoot.
So, but thank you, Beau. I knew this was going to be in uh interesting, I knew it was going to be fun, but I didn't quite expect it to be as perhaps as challenging as it's been. I really enjoyed hearing about McMillan and and the idea of provocative experiences. I think that's something that we need to explore further and actually ask people about the experiences they've had that have been particularly uh personally challenging, not from a a physical perspective, but more from as you've been talking about, the the mental, historical, the the, I guess, reaction to the place and what it what it's been in the past. I think it's a great idea.
That's well said, Mark, I um, because you can emphasize leisure too much to be just purely pleasurable. And I think that's fantastic, of course, we're always going to default to pleasure in our outdoor lives and and that's a good thing. But sometimes when there's that sweet and sour element of why we're out there, what we're doing and what we're thinking while we're doing it, I think that's really excellent because it it gives yourselves over to the potential of your brain. You know, our thinking capacities are so potent and I think why not have these best of both worlds of the physical body moving and do an action out there, but you're thinking all these wonderful things as well.
I I like taking photographs in the outdoors and one of the things I like taking photographs of is when I come across like an old car being wrecked and dumped down a gully somewhere, for instance. I hate the idea that it's there, but they make fantastic photographs. And I like the contrast between this sort of wrecked bit of human waste and some beautiful bush, you know, that's, and it makes, it gets me thinking too, you know, just, hey, how the hell could somebody do this? But it's extraordinary that these things survive and they'll probably survive for for decades and decades out there as well.
Well, do you know what you've just said there? That's very much a metaphor for what I've done with McMillan's walking track. Is that you can go in and take out all those old car bodies and that's that's fine and that's good. Uh, but maybe they're not doing a whole bunch of harm because the harm has been done. They've been put there and they're now rusting away doing their thing. It much, it's much the same with McMillan's walking track. There's a lot of people that say McMillan's name should still be there in some way, shape or form so that we know of the atrocities he did and that let's not do that again, let's not repeat that. Now, that's a huge part of the Black Lives Matter movement and I I'm I'm certainly not overly opinionated about it, but it certainly gives you that good impression, do, how much of the past do you make upfront? And how much do you then put by default all of these memorandums of understanding next to it? Uh, you know, to layer up the history. So um, do you take the car body out or do you leave it there because it's a teaching point?
Certainly, I'm very encouraged by the fact that we're having these conversations now and things are starting to shift and starting to move. That's that's a very positive thing.
Good point.
I just wanted to point out too, just thinking about your very opening comments about where you are and your your wife's shit up the back of the property um and dressed up in your puffer jacket. We've got the air conditioning on here in this room because if if we didn't, we'd be running down my face the sweat. So we are in the same country but in different worlds.
Oh, I think it's wonderful, I mean, Australia is remarkable. We are, the fact that we have the tropics right down to Tassie where you've got these giant platypus running around, it's uh, it's awesome. The fact that we are having this conversation now and you've got the aircon on and I need to crank out that little potbelly now.
Yeah, so um, just in terms of questions, uh, what's next? I hear you're talking about some some uh, the trail videos coming out and some more river videos coming out.
Yeah, so um, I mean, this is kind of a blatant plug for my YouTube channel, but it's worth checking out for the outdoors, I suppose. I'm going to try some different films leading up to Christmas, as in shorter format films. If there's one thing I'm not very good at, Mark, it's it's short storytelling. I tend to wax on and bang on way too much about context and subtext. So I'm going to try and and force my hand by making a lot of short films between now and Christmas. Um, now, I don't know, quite know exactly what they'll look like because they haven't been shot yet, they've been sort of conceptualized. But uh, in the meantime, the big projects that have been burning away for a year or two are things like Bad River, the series, uh, the McMillan Run, which is called A Bloody Long Run, uh, sort of a play on words there. Uh, and then a whole bunch of other small uh, all outdoor related or making things out of junk or, you know, all these kind of, I try and stitch in a whole bunch of themes to to my films and, yeah, they're all coming out on YouTube. Bad River, the book is going to come out next year, so I'm trying to skulk away from the house at four AM in the morning to try and ride up here in the studio. So I'm as busy as I've ever been and it's a real um, it's a super busy part of life and I I'm, I love it, it's really good.
I I shall definitely be looking out for those videos and I just finished reading your book yesterday and thoroughly enjoyed that, so thank you for that.
Oh, thank you.
My pleasure. So, how about speaking, handed a question, another question. So where would you encourage young children to find their own backyard ventures and learn to tell their story?
That is a great question. You've got, we've got a, I, my interpretation of that question is how do we empower them to find their adventures? They will find it, they they're the best person in the world to go and find adventure, a ten year old, an eight year old, a fifteen year old. They they can find adventure, we've got to trust them to do that. So it's about giving them boundaries that are uh reasonable and and within the realm of safe and not bonkers, you know, we're not sending them off to another country or to another watershed that we can't find them. But I I I'm not the best qualified for that because I've always guided twenty year olds generally, so young adults. Now I'm thrown into the, I'm thrown into the boiler with a three year old and a six month old because I, you know, I don't know what I'm allowed to let them climb or or what roads they can run on or walk on. So it's about finding those thresholds of where you can let them find adventure and and trusting yourself with that. And, you know, I essentially just default to my wife, she's got a much better gauge of what is good for a three year old and not. I'm not very good at it, so uh, uh, yeah, it's about finding finding that out.
Yeah, that sounds like a sensible uh sensible way to do it, to default to the wife.
Well, it means you stay married too, you know, there's some certain things we've got to protect ourselves from in life.
Yeah, indeed. And I would imagine this might be another film or another book in a few years' time, you know, how to be a parent of adventurous child, you know?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, I know Freya Hoffmeister, uh, amazing woman, you may have remembered. Yeah, she paddled around Australia, I still think she's the most amazing paddler in the world to ever be seen, she's remarkable. And she um, I remember her and her little one, she used to paddle her with her, her little one in the front um hatch. You know, just paddle her out with some floating devices and away she'd go. Really, really amazing stuff and uh, you know, I I'm sure it's not very safe in so many people's worlds, but I was I was fairly enamored by it.
Fantastic. Well, I think that maybe might a good place to wrap it up, being fully enamored with an adventure. So uh, listen, thank you very much, Beau, for for coming along tonight and being part of our our awards evening. Um, I I was pleased that we ran into you, pleased that I ran into you in in the Blue Mountains a few weeks ago and very pleased that you've been able to be part of this event, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for having me, if I was half an hour late, I'm sorry, I was here earlier and then came back. And congratulations to everyone, I sat through the first few awards before I had to go and put a kid to sleep. But uh, thank you for having me, I love the idea of your warmth up there and the exotic nature of putting on an air conditioner is just radical. That's so cool.
Well, feel free to come by, come by and visit us one day, Beau, and enjoy some of the the warmth in Queensland.
Oh, you bet, well, yeah, it's a real shame this wasn't live, I would have been on a plane yesterday doing exactly that.
Well, maybe we'll get you back another day when we go live.
Thanks, Mark, thanks everyone and congratulations.
Good night. So there we go, Beau Miles, our our guest speaker for this evening. And if you wanted to find out more about Beau, you can find him on beaumiles.com or his social media channels, clearly YouTube is a place to go check him out. So uh, that's that's pretty much it for this evening, they're not quite done yet. Dom Courtney, our executive officer for Outdoors Queensland, would like to say a few few words to close. Uh, but it is, it is it for me, so listen, thank you very much from me. Uh, I've had a great time tonight and I hope to see you all again in twenty twenty three. Dom. Thank you, good night, and Mr. Dom Courtney, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Um, for this awards presentation, we've gathered on various lands across Queensland and across Australia. Uh, we've may, we've may have even had some people join us from overseas. Um, Mark acknowledged the First Nations people of the lands where we gather and I'd like to also acknowledge those peoples and particularly the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples. We're here on Yagura country, uh, the lands of the Torribal and Jagua people. Outdoors Queensland acknowledges all elders, past, present and emerging, and acknowledges the critically important roles that they continue to play regarding connection to land, water and sky, which is the places where outdoor activities take place. Just reflecting on a little bit of history, um, the first awards presentation by our organisation was held back in two thousand and two. And that was the the start of acknowledging excellence in Queensland's outdoor community in a formal way. This event tonight is actually the twenty first annual awards evening, so happy twenty first. And thanks to those who've been part of it. I have a string of thank yous that I need to make. Um, a big thank you to Mark Squires, our wonderful emcee this evening. And also, I have to acknowledge a lot of work in the lead up to tonight that Mark's done. Uh, I'd also like to thank Dawn Carnell and Yvette Davies for their contributions to this awards presentation, the work behind the scenes that not many people see. And speaking of work behind the scenes, um, I'd really like to thank Lachlan and Mike from Element Photo and Video Productions. It's been an amazing effort to make this evening's show possible and wonderful. Um, this is our third online awards ceremony and it's been successful because of the work done by Element Photo and Video Productions. As Mark said, next year, we're hoping to return to face to face dinner. But we're also hoping that Element will continue to assess, assist with the event production, especially if we manage to um include an online element in the presentation. So another hybrid event in face to face and online, uh, that's that's the goal. I'd like to acknowledge our sponsors, the Queensland Government is the major sponsor of the Outdoors Queensland Awards. We really appreciate the support shown by the Queensland Government through Minister Hinchcliffe and through the hardworking staff at Sport and Recreation within the Department of Tourism, Innovation and Sport. The Accelerate Action Plan for twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five, which is part of the Activate Queensland Strategy, it's an important piece of work by the Queensland Government and Outdoors Queensland and our outdoor sector must be involved in the implementation of the Action Plan and the Activate Queensland Strategy. Brisbane City Council sponsors two of our awards and we acknowledge the work done by BCC to enhance the livability of Brisbane through increased opportunities for outdoor activities across the city. Thank you to councillor Tracy Davis for presenting the awards sponsored by the council. A big thanks to Active Queenslanders Industry Alliance for sponsoring our our activities and for sponsoring the twenty twenty two AQIA Workforce Development Award. Thank you to Phil Reeves and the AQIA team for their work in relation to workforce development for the active industry across Queensland. And thank you to Joe Chu for presenting the AQIA sponsored award this evening. K2 Base Camp has sponsored our Emerging Achiever Award in its different incarnations for several years. We really appreciate that support and the support provided to the outdoor industry by K2. And it's an important part of this evening to acknowledge the emerging achievers and wasn't it wonderful to um have so many great nominees and finalists for that award? A huge thank you to Beau Miles for sharing his adventures with us with us this evening. Um, I actually read Beau's book a few weeks ago while I was in COVID isolation. Uh, it was a little bit ironic because he was, he was writing a book which was about inspiring people to go outside. And at the time, I was locked in uh COVID isolation in my house. But um, it did get me through that isolation period a few weeks ago, so thanks for that, Beau. His, it did intrigue me that his current uh walk included a stop at a pub and um, I actually did a fifty kilometre walk a few years ago with one of my good mates. And um, so maybe Dicko might be a future speaker to tell us the story of the walk from one, from a cattle property to the Morven Pub to Sadler's Water Hole. Um, so I don't know if Dicko's ready for that yet, but um, we'll see. Um, it really is great to to have the inspiration that Beau's Beau gives, particularly in relation to outdoor adventures in our backyards, every bit of outdoor activity really counts. The award finalists and the winners, um, they've been recognised here this evening because they're changing things for the better for our communities. I'm not going to go through and list all of them, but they're on the screen right now, I'm not going to read them all out just in case I mangle someone's name or get it wrong. But I do want to say a massive thank you to all of the nominees, the finalists, the winners, but also the people who made the nominations. It's so important to acknowledge the wonderful things that are happening out there and tonight- And tonight is about the people who've won awards, but it's also about all of the other finalists who've made the evening so wonderful. We do thank you greatly. I do want to say a quick thank you to Sports House Milton, which I think should, should be called Sport and Recreation House, but that's a discussion for another day. They've hosted us, this is our, our studio this evening. You might think we're up at Mount Coother at one of the professional TV studios, but no, we chose to be here at Sports House at Milton. And thanks to Cole and his team for the work they've done into making us feel welcome and tonight to go so well. I also wanted to, just another mention for the finalists and the winners of the awards, you've all received buffs in your box that came with your trophies and your certificates. We hope you wear those buffs with pride. Feel free to share photos of you wearing your buffs with your certificates and award trophies. Of course, you can do the hashtag social media option and it's hashtag Outdoors Queensland Awards. A big thank you to the judging panel, the Outdoors Queensland Board. They volunteer their time to provide this organisation with oversight and guidance and also take on the challenging and sometimes thankless task of judging these awards. And that process does not get any easier over time. They do a wonderful job and I want to thank the board for their efforts. I'm almost done, don't worry. Just want to take a moment to thank everyone who's provided me with support throughout the last year, from my lovely wife, my family and friends, colleagues from various organisations, the board members and of course, our terrific staff. Outdoors Queensland has a clear purpose. We work to achieve positive change for Queensland's outdoor sector. We give permission for people to experience the outdoors on their own terms. We help people connect with others who can take outdoor adventures to new heights. And we bring together people for events like tonight, creating a community with a shared love of the outdoors. And we hope to see you all again in 2023 and beyond. Thank you to everyone who is helping provide opportunities for people to make connections with Queensland's outdoors. Please keep up your great work of encouraging more people to live life outdoors. I'd like to finish with my favourite catchphrase. Be kind to yourself, be kind to others and be kind to our planet. Thank you.
Thank you for being a part of the Outdoors Queensland Awards.
Congratulations to all the winners, all the finalists and everybody who entered the awards this year. We thank you for being a part of the great outdoors Queensland industry.